Let's call this meeting the October 24th meeting in the Eugene Planning Commission to Order. Before we go to Agenda Item 1, we have a new member that's joining us today, Steve Baker. Welcome. Look forward to your service.
Thank you very much.
No wonder I was so confused. It's Mark S.
Yes.
I kept seeing Mark and I kept seeing Steve.
Yeah.
I said, "Figure out where we're going to get two for one."
Yep.
Welcome.
I started calling by my middle name when I was too old, so I remember having this call by that first name.
There you go. If you have any questions about process or procedure and the staff can't help you out, feel free to call on any one of us. I'm sure they'd be willing to sit down and talk things over with you.
Very happy to do that.
That would be great.
Just have to be a little bit careful about what we talk about, but procedure and process is wide open. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 1, Public Comment. I don't see any public.
Nope.
So we'll move on to Agenda Item 2, Relatively Possibly Brief Meeting Today.
It could be a brief meeting today. We have a fairly informal kind of presentation for you today. We're going to walk you through the Agenda Item Summary and provide a little bit more kind of context, in-depth of discussion there. And we want to hear any questions or thoughts that you have about what we've identified as our draft public land need. And we'll just take it from there. So what we're talking about today is those lands that are needed for either a public or semi-public use. Examples would be, of public uses would be schools, parks, infrastructure needs, whether they be for stormwater or some kind of electric substation, something like that. We'll also touch briefly on the airport. Semi-public uses would be, the primary use would be a religious institution, so a church or a fraternal organization or something like that. And so we've done analysis of both of those sets of land. And first, I wanted to talk to you about those public lands that we have identified as needing a specific urban growth boundary expansion. And there was a map in your Agenda Item Summary, and I'm going to hand out a revised map because it shows these specific tax lots that we're talking about. The one in your agenda just kind of circled general areas, but since we actually do have a sense of the kind of property boundaries that we're talking about, we wanted to give you that revised information. So looking at this map, we could start up in the right-hand corner with Santa Clara Community Park. The yellow highlighted areas are pieces that are actually owned by the city of Eugene. Were purchased for the purpose of a community park to serve Santa Clara. And they total approximately 19 acres. There may be plans in the future to have a larger park in that area, but because we don't know exactly what properties will be purchased or anything like that, at this point, we're just saying, let's bring in those areas that we know we have ownership of and can serve that purpose in the future. Then moving over to the west, we can look at Golden Gardens Park. And let's see, the acreage that we talked about needing for Golden Gardens Park is 160 acres. And that is, the 160 acres is all of the area that is highlighted in yellow there. It's interesting to know that the city actually owns 223 acres in that location. And you see on your map, there is a dashed line that's kind of bolded just to the west of the yellow area. That is also owned by the city of Eugene. When Parks expanded Golden Gardens Park, oh, I don't know, it was probably six or seven years ago now, they purchased that piece as well and had, at the time, had an agreement with the county. Whereas if the county was willing to buy that site for the purposes of relocating the fairgrounds, that the city had that agreement where they would, the city would sell the property to them. That agreement has since sunset, and there are no active talks going on about that at the time. So it's an interesting piece of information. We are not showing inclusion of that particular parcel at this time because it is not needed for the park itself. We have a future kind of vision or concept plan for the park that does not include that particular area. So for that reason, we're only including the area that was needed for the park. Is that clear? Okay. Then the, yeah.
Just ask a question.
Sure.
So actually, the park is straight, like that very narrow, strange place that goes north, which is not a kid's house.
The yellow highlighted one? Yes. The park does own that, and that's a good thing for access.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, what it looks like, but access.
It is, it is, and it is owned by the park. And it's particularly useful because this park in the future may be used for more active recreation. There's a plan for some softball fields out in that area, and so it's good to bring that traffic in off of Clear Lake rather than up from the south through the neighborhood. So, and then the final piece is a piece owned by Bethel School District. This is an area, actually, we've had a lot of conversations with Bethel School District. They are forecasting because there is a fair amount of buildable land in their area that they will have a need for an additional school site, possibly a high school, they're not quite sure at this time. And so they have, they looked all throughout the existing urban growth boundary for a piece of property. They weren't able to find one, so they've settled on this area out here. Because of the recent economic downturn, there hasn't been the building that they were once anticipating, but it's still forecasted in the future. And our work with the Buildable Lands Inventory also, you know, suggests that there is additional capacity in that area. So this is another area that we're talking about including for the future, future school site. So, yes.
If that property's bought in for a school site, and later they decide they don't need a school, what would then happen to the land? Could it become part of some other inventory?
That's a good question. It would be given a designation of government education, most likely. And so we'll have to look into kind of legally if there's anything around, you know, state statutes that would trigger something, but I don't know that answer often.
Because the area is included in the airport fly zone, or whatever it's referred to, Randy would know that better than I. So it cannot be residential, so we sort of get a parcel that could be in the city but in limbo, as far as what you would ever do with it.
We do have airport contours that we can show you, and you're correct in that the contour does go over that, over that area. Not all of it, but a significant portion of it. And I'm not sure that it means residential cannot happen. It doesn't outright prohibit it, but it makes it very undesirable from the airport's point of view.
Yeah, actually, that'd be interesting to know because I was under the impression that it could not be because noise factors and FAA requirements and things like that.
There are two contours. One is, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but one is tighter and really kind of is almost just over the airport-owned property, and absolutely nothing can happen in that area. The contour, I believe, there's a bit more leeway, but there's certainly reasons why it makes it undesirable to have housing in the area.
Bill had a question, Carol.
Yes.
So then, in all of what we've been looking at as far as potential residential inventory, this isn't included in anything that we've been considering?
Not to this point.
To this, okay.
Yeah. It doesn't mean that we can't look at it in the future, but it's not in our first priority set of lands that we're looking at.
But if it's in that airport fly zone or whatever that's called.
Right.
I can understand that that wouldn't be desirable.
Right. Actually, speaking, while we're talking about the airport, I did want to mention that we did also look at whether or not it made sense to bring in the airport into the urban growth boundary. That is also a public facility. And after looking through the statutes, talking with the airport management, at this time, we don't see an advantage to bringing it in because state statute gives such kind of broad exemptions to airport operations and all of their kind of support and ancillary uses, that there's nothing that they need to do or want to be able to do that they can't do under their current exemptions through the state. And so at this point in time, we're not seeing an obvious benefit of bringing it into our urban growth boundary. And so at this point in time, we're proposing to leave it outside.
And whatever protections, looking ahead here, but whatever protections may be provided by the jurisdictional boundary in this area. If that goes away in the future, the county still is subject to FAA requirements and all the safety and developmental restrictions that may come along with that, Carolyn?
Yes, absolutely. Those are federal, federal requirements that the county would be subject to as well.
Okay. Yeah, John?
So as we're looking to, currently with Springfield, eventually with Eugene, to move the UGB where it may or may not, no longer make sense, I thought the airport was one of those areas of consideration.
You think, you mean the metro plan boundary?
Yes, thank you.
That is open for discussion about whether or not it would be stay around the airport. There are also other kind of instruments that we can use in our relationship with Lane County. We could have some kind of intergovernmental agreement that kind of oversaw the jurisdiction of the airport facility.
But conceivably, either through an IGA or through
The metro plan.
Metro Plan Boundary, staying around the airport.
Yes.
Retain our concerns.
Correct.
In that way. Thank you.
Correct.
Rick? Given that we're talking about, and at some point Eugene is going to deal with the issue that John was referring to with the metro plan boundary, there has been some discussion, although probably at the 50,000-foot level, with regard to if in fact, because this area you're talking about here is also one of the prime industrial areas, it's been discussed, that there's going to be some mitigation requirements up there. And the airport lands, because they have to stay open, could possibly be sort of the lands that you could use as a kind of a mitigation bank to deal with this area? Do we run into any situations if we, if the metro boundary would come into the UGB with regard to what the city could do on that land? Because then we've kind of turned it over to Lane County. I mean, I don't know how the structure, when we have airport lands, how that works. Because right now, it's inside the metro boundary.
Correct.
But let's say that the vote removes that from the metro. Does then that turn the jurisdiction of whatever occurs out there to Lane County?
Presumably.
Right now, they currently administer the zoning code for that area.
That county does?
The county does, correct. And so that would remain the same if the metro plan boundary moved.
So we don't have a UL on that?
No, because it's outside the urban growth boundary, but inside the metro plan.
Okay.
So, yeah, so if you own property there, you would go to the county.
And then I guess, then, something else, and Randy probably could almost answer this for me because he sat on the airport board, but does it affect, if we leave it outside, is there any effect on the master plan of what develops there? There isn't? Okay.
That was a question I had to be reminded that the airport was outside of the urban growth boundary, outside of the jurisdiction when I sat on that committee. Yeah, it's a county asset.
Okay.
Or a county, city asset in the county's jurisdictional area.
Thanks.
So the next item to talk about are kind of cataloged on page 2 of your AIS. And those are the types of public facilities that we anticipate occurring inside our current urban growth boundary. And so it's important for us to inventory those because they will, they will most likely take place on lands that have a different use. And I think the perfect example is parks that we talked about in the AIS a little bit. But based on the Parks Recreation and Open Space Project list, it shows that we have a need for acquiring an additional 160 acres of parkland inside the existing urban growth boundary to serve our current population and future population's needs. Now those, and then the kind of far-right column of that chart shows that approximately 154 acres of those will occur on low-density residential land. So it's important for us to inventory that because we recognize that we need to offset the impact that that will have on those low-density residential lands. So when we talk to you, next time we come to talk to you about our single-family housing need, this 160 acres will play a prominent role in whatever that need for single-family homes is. In other words, we'll have to add that on top of any expansion need that we see for single-family homes.
Because this acreage is already inside.
Correct. And it's already designated as low-density residential land.
John has a question, too.
So, just to clarify for me, we're talking about adding 34,000 people in the next 20 years, which will require a certain amount of parkland. Is that this figure, or is this parkland needs that we have already?
It doesn't really, the project list doesn't draw that distinction. I would say that it's both. So a number of those, I'm quite intimately familiar with this project list, and a number of the park needs are for neighborhood parks in areas that are currently underserved by parks. So
That would be current population.
That would be current population, exactly. How, well, so then when you look at the case of Santa Clara and Golden Gardens, those are also areas that are underserved by community parks, but we're looking to expand for those particular reasons. Will that community park also serve future populations? You know, probably. So it's not really parsed out in that way. It's more like looking at the total population, where that growth will occur, and where we see deficiencies. Something important to add into the mix that this 160 acres does not cover is if we do have a significant expansion area for single-family homes in an area that doesn't already, you know, isn't in proximity to a park, we may need to expand to also have park services in that expansion area. So that is not accounted for in here. We'll have to kind of deal with that issue once we start looking at potential expansion areas.
Well, my recollection is that one times, the PROS Plan looked at having X number of acres of parks for XY number of residents. They're no longer tied those together.
That's correct.
But assumably, 34,000 more people will increase the demand on our parks. We're assuming that the expansion we're hoping for, the increase in parkland we're hoping for now, will meet that need in general?
Absolutely, it will. And the PROS Plan was actually done for a population, it was projected for a population that is very much, almost exactly the same as what we're projecting for over the 20 years. So that worked out well.
Thank you.
Carolyn, if I could follow up on John's comment. First, I'm glad that this is being addressed because it was, it was an area that I had some question about early on in the process, so I'm glad it's being addressed this time. But the PROS Plan was being adopted when I first came on the Planning Commission, so it's still kind of vivid in my mind. But as I recall, the per capita acres of parkland jumped from what had previously been eight acres per capita to 20 acres per capita, if I remember that correctly. And as John said, there was a disconnect between the priority list and that, that kind of guideline or objective.
Yes.
How does this address that, the 20 acre per capita?
We looked at using the per capita kind of service level information as a guide for determining what our future need was, and we ruled it out back when we were working on ECLA. And basically, the service level standard of 20 acres per 1,000 residents was a guideline. That was, that was a, it was a guideline that was in the PROS Plan, but since that time, we've really moved away from it. It wasn't anything that is adopted and that we, that we actually base our current planning on. And in fact, the National Association for Recreation and Parks no longer uses those service levels because what they find is each community's needs are so unique that having kind of this standard number out there was really more of a hindrance to good planning than a benefit. So what these figures are based on are actual acquisition projects that are listed in the plan. So I feel like it's a, you know, really strong methodology. We have, it's, the project list is adopted by council. It's what our SDCs for parks are based on. There's a lot of kind of good backing behind that plan. I think it's a good methodology.
Steve?
Yeah, I had a question about the split between low-density and medium-density. There's some overlap with R3 and R4, but it's basically R1 and R2.
Right.
And I know that a lot of the rest of this plan is focused on a lot of multifamily being built in existing already zoned areas. So it seems, it might make sense to go back, and even though these are already on your project list.
Right.
We need to go back and look at these numbers because if we're planning on increasing the number of occupants in certain area, then it probably means that there's some of those areas that are going to be more underserved by neighborhood parks than they should be. And I know it's a lot easier to buy parkland around the edge, but in terms of planning, it might be valuable to at least consider that in how you split this up because it might mean that you might need to increase the amount of acreage set aside in the MDR which you gave R3 and R4.
Mm-hmm.
That's just, you know, something we consider.
I think that's an excellent point. The way that we currently identified which of those acres come out of LDR, which come out of MDR, and which come out of commercial is by actually looking at the project list and having an understanding of where specifically the location is of that project and knowing, and then looking at what the current designation is. And so that's kind of how we came up with that list. But it is based on a project list that doesn't necessarily account for increased density in some of our corridors and commercial areas and what are the park service needs of that area. So it's actually a really, I think, relevant point moving forward.
Thanks, Steve.
Rick? If I could, just back to Golden Garden before we move out of this, parks and everything. It seems, I guess my recommendation would be is if the city already owns this other 60-some acres, and if I'm not mistaken, statewide planning goals are kind of vague on parks and so on. Why wouldn't we just go ahead and include that inside as future parkland or future public-use land, since statewide planning goals are sort of vague on how you do that? Because it seems like just leaving this as sort of a little island sitting there is kind of an odd thing. Because if we decide at some point there's a use for it, now we have to go back through a whole process where this is a little different in my mind than privately owned that you could do something with. This is under the stewardship of the city, and the city gets to decide what happens. They can hold it forever, do nothing with it, but it just seems like to leave the little island sit there is kind of an odd, an odd process because we're going to wrap everything all the way around it.
Yeah.
Particularly if for some reason, that area to the north of it actually is looked upon as maybe an industrial land expansion. If that happens, then you, we're creating this county island somewhere, which is something we've tried to stay away from.
Right. I tend to agree on one hand, and I'd be interested in hearing other people's thoughts on that matter. You know, at this point, we're not necessarily drawing the boundary of the urban, you know, and so it could be that due to just having a reasonable pattern of UGB that we would include it.
Right.
But
That'd be good.
I'd be interested in hearing other people's thoughts on that, if you had any.
Steve has a thought?
All right.
Well, I'm just looking at the way it's laid out now, and obviously, you'd like to have the access to the Clear Lake Road, but if that area were included, you might actually reconfigure the park so that, it looks like you're wasting a lot of space with access because now you have two
Right.
Two narrow Ls, whereas maybe you would trade out and, you know, I don't know what might be considered, but maybe you would give up some part that was on that street where the Golden Gardens logo is.
Right.
You might give up some, you know, so that you come in, you really have a shorter access to the park, and you're not driving around so much, and you could still redesign the park in a way that would work. And you could maybe take out that much area if you didn't need that lot of land, you could take that out of some other part of the parcel for the time being and set it aside.
Maybe as sort of an affordable housing project next to a community park?
And a school.
Yeah. Gee, there's a concept of planning.
John?
Well, I agree.
What do you think, Steve? Okay. John?
I agree. It makes more sense to bring it in than not for the flexibility it provides and the fact that the city has control. If it's currently farmed, and that's possible, it will continue to be farmed, I would assume, until some other use were determined, so I don't see any downside.
Community gardens, big one.
Any other thoughts? I appreciate that input. When we were, Jason and I went out to speak to a group of folks out that are working on long-term plans for Bethel School District, and they had an interest in seeing that brought in, brought in too. So the residents out there did, so I think there's a case for that.
Rick, just a quick question. That little sliver that's above it, is that privately owned? The piece between the little panhandle and the school district, is that privately owned?
Yes.
Okay. So Jason, do you want to tell us, Jason's going to take over and talk about infrastructure.
There are two categories remaining of public and semi-public land. One of them is landing it for public operations and facilities, and that is what the final two rows of that table represent. The first is infrastructure needs or facility needs that the city would have over the 20-year period. Typically, what this includes for a city are things like a city hall, or fire stations, or a library. It also would include any facility, other entities such as eWeb and their facility needs in the future. In general, what you find for a city of our size is that we have already secured the land for most of those facilities, so you find the need for that land dropping off, which is in essence what's represented here. We don't, while we are looking at a city hall, we're looking at a city hall on its current site. We don't have a need for another library. Our fire station plan is pretty good. So essentially, we're only looking at needing about 20 more acres over the next 20 years. Primarily, that was determined through work with public work staff on wastewater and stormwater facilities that we would need, and primarily, it's stormwater retention that comprises a lot of this acreage that has already been planned. In many cases, they have an idea of where that might occur, and as you can see from what the allocation would be, the vast majority of that is intended to be in industrial land. So that's why you have an industrial categorization for that. They are stormwater retention out in West Eugene and the need for land for those. So that's pretty much that we're for- We're forecasting a 20-acre need there. And then the University of Oregon is also a key public facility in the city, and we approached them about their plans for expansion over the next 20 years. They indicated to us they thought they would need an additional 30 acres over that period. Based on roughly what their acquisition pattern has been in the past, and on where they're looking for land, that established the breakdown here of how to allocate those to plan designations, with the largest piece being in commercial. I'll cover this last one real quick, and then we can have questions on all three. The last one category that you plan for are semi-public uses, which is addressed in the paragraph below that table. Essentially, those are your religious institutions, as well as nonprofit. Primarily, what we're seeing is that, in general, the trends on religious institutions have been relatively flat in terms of land need. There are reasons it might go up, reasons it might go down, but we're not anticipating a massive growth in the need for land for religious institutions. Originally, back during the ECLA process, we were forecasting that this would need its own separate piece of land, new land, related to these institutions. However, as we worked through our partially vacant lands, those lands that are already developed but have capacity for additional development, what we found were a lot of religious institutions that are sitting on pretty good pieces of ground that would allow for them to expand, or for them to be purchased by another institution who might expand. So the partially vacant committee, subcommittee of the Technical Resource Group, after going through all these properties, and Commissioner Duncan was part of that process, felt that we, there was more than adequate land in these existing properties to account for our need in the future, such that we wouldn't need to allocate new land for religious institutions. So that is the reason why it's not in the table. We're not proposing any new land needed. It would be accomplished through redevelopment or development of vacant land on those pieces. And we have seen some of that. We'll see essentially religious institutions trading up in the community to another institution's building, rather than going and building a new building. We haven't seen a lot of, a whole lot of new religious institutions being constructed, and again, we don't anticipate that, given what we know about national trends. So that's where that stands for religious institutions. Yeah, and then any questions on either of those three?
Steve?
I just asked a question about the, one about the city of Eugene. You talked a lot about wastewater. Can the public works actually talk to eWeb to make sure that they didn't have any, you know, long-range plans for substations that might need to serve these areas where they need some land in addition to their services?
We did talk to them, and either they already had land for those, or the land need was anticipated to be so small as to basically not register and aggregate as expansion need.
Jason, several years ago, the First Baptist Church relocated from downtown to a significantly large piece of property out north. If, if the urban growth boundary, Carolyn, back to what we were talking about with parks, should entail a significantly large area, and you plan for parks for that, you also then plan for, like a church or other public institution, is that part of the calculation?
It's a good question. With parks, it's a little more cut and dry.
Yeah.
Because we, we like a park to be within one-half mile of all residents. We have that kind of geographic standard. I'm not aware of one.
For churches?
Churches, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Bill?
It seems like churches aren't a geographic draw. It seems like they draw from the overall community based on particular flavor of the church.
Mm-hmm.
And so it seemed like you'd want maybe a certain amount per capita of land or area or ability for that, but not necessarily in, like a neighborhood park location.
Right.
Rick?
Just a comment on that. What we discovered when we looked at these, where the churches, the religious organizations, were sort of scattered throughout Eugene, and in many of them, because they showed up on our partial vacant inventory, we started, we looked at, I think we probably looked at almost every one of them, if I remember right. We found that they tended to always have an acre, two acres of excess land attached to them, and it was interesting, when we did the analysis, I don't remember which way the numbers were, but I think we needed 43 acres of land for the next 20 years, and we discovered that the partially vacant portion of these that weren't being used was like 45 acres or 46 acres. So instead of arguing over two or three acres, we sort of said, that seems to be a wash for us. Now, certainly, we have a new church being built way out in West Eugene on some I-1 land currently, but in the one Randy talked about, you know, those are situations where we, they're actually on some new lands, but on the other side of them, the Baptist Church left, we ended up with the shed in its place, so some other use went into there, you know, so. And what we see a lot of the smaller religious organizations or buildings go to, is they, they'll become daycare centers or things like that, so they tend to sort of move and change a little bit.
The one going out West Eugene will be vacating a downtown location, relatively, you know.
And we did find, that group was working through all of the religious institutions that were in low-density residential, and a separate committee looked at MDR and HDR, and then staff looked at commercial, and there were more institutions in those lands as well. So even if that group were feeling that it might have been close, the other lands that we found, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity out there for that to happen on existing lands.
John, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't.
And, and churches can locate in residential zoned areas, correct?
They're, they're conditional use.
Conditional uses?
Yeah, there are CUP, I think, in everything.
In everything, okay. Okay.
So, I think that wraps up what we've got for you. Are there more questions?
Yes, you can.
One more question, just on, so, if the University of Oregon is, is planning on this acquisition, I'm concerned more about the medium than the high-density. I'm assuming that that would be purchases in the immediate area, what that means, whatever you deal with housing, you'd have to make up those, not those large, but you'd have to make up that acreage somewhere else.
Right.
Yep.
If you're not planning on, if you're sort of inventorying of land for that purpose.
And I believe that is the, that, that's why we account for it in that way, so that we can specifically know that three MDR acres and three HDR acres cannot be attributed residential capacity to.
Correct.
I have questions for Jason or Carolyn? Hey, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So that brings us to our last agenda item, items from staff and commission. Carolyn, I see the next regularly scheduled meeting of this body is Halloween with an appropriately spooky topic.
(laughing)
Land needs for the urban growth or for future growth.
Single-family, single-family housing.
Single-family housing.
Mm-hmm.
And, but before that, tomorrow night, we are getting together, under Alyssa's care, joint meeting with Springfield and Lane County Commissions to continue our discussions on county's request to move the jurisdictional boundary to match the urban growth boundary in the Springfield area.
Correct.
We're hopeful that's the only deliberations that need to be made.
Okay. And that starts at 6:30 with snacks at 6?
Yes, snacks at 6.
Okay.
And I would invite Commissioner Baker to come join us for his first joint commission meeting.
Well, there you go. Watch us on YouTube for any previous thorough, whatever it is. Anything else from staff, Carolyn?
Um, no, we are, we have a Technical Resource Group meeting today, where we are talking about, hopefully, kind of wrapping up some of our partially vacant land need stuff around, single-family. And so we'll have some good information to bring you guys next Monday.
Good.
That will incorporate that. Also wanted to let you know that I've, we've talked to the mayor about our vacant position that we have on the commission, and it is, it is in her hands now, and I believe she'll be repolting, and so we can get that seat filled as soon as possible.
Good.
So clarification, the intent is to potentially select from the existing pool of applicants?
I believe at this point, that is what they're looking to do.
So Steve, that means you only have to do the dishes until we get a newer, younger?
(laughing)
That's very reassuring.
Any items from the commission? Yeah, Rick?
Just a question. We have, I'm trying to understand a little bit about the, the public hearing on zone modification for I-1.
Oh.
Oh!
It'll be me again. Carolyn, so on November 15th, you have a public hearing on code amendment that is only for the I-1 zone, and it would specifically authorize a VA clinic as a government use, as a permitted outright use.
And who, who is the applicant?
There is no applicant. It was initiated by the city council.
Okay, now I'm going to ask a really, I guess, naive question. If they instituted as wanting it, and they're the decision-making body, are we just a formality at that point?
Absolutely not. I mean, it has to meet the criteria. They didn't, they didn't initiate it saying that they were going to approve it or deny it. They initiated it to allow it to go through the process.
And this is for a VA clinic only?
For, correct. No other types of clinic.
And we have a definition of what VA clinic is?
Not in the code, no, but we can.
Probably ought to think about that.
Okay, thank you.
And therefore, I'll have to not be involved.
Ah, good to know.
I get to pull a U. I get to pull a U on this one.
Better make sure we're all here, then.
Yeah. That's why I'm letting you know ahead of time.
Or that there aren't any other conflicts of interest.
Right. Or just legislative, has to do with I-1 land?
I have a monetary.
Okay.
Interest in.
And that.
Any other items from the commission?
See you after.
If not, this meeting's adjourned.